Our council committee meetings and we're thankful that everyone is presumably thawed out from the snow and ice and we are very thankful for our staff in coordination in conjunction with municipalities and our state agencies that worked in concert during the snow and ice event. I would like to also announce that the public comment sign in sheet will be available in the rotunda at six o'clock PM. Councilpersons, I would also like to enumerate the fact that I met with the clerk and our attorney and certainly as we are having discussions, please allow yourself to be acknowledged by the chair before talking. I love the robust conversations back and forth, but it's hard for the clerk to keep up if we have not been officially acknowledged. And so we're going to begin our audit committee. I was about to say Brother Herb Sasse, but Mr. Herb Sasse is our chair. Joe Boykin, Henry Darby, Brantley Moody are all parts of that committee. Mr. Sasse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our audit committee will start out today with our approval of the minutes for May 2, 2024.
Move second.
Move in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next item, number two, agenda item FY24 External Audit Presentation. Mr. Michael Slapnik, CPA with Scott &amp; Company.
Thank you, Councilman Sasse. I am Michael Slapnik with Scott &amp; Company up in Columbia, South Carolina, and we performed your fiscal year 2024 audit. Had previously met with Councilman Sasse to give a more detailed presentation, but I know you guys are looking for a more broad overview this evening as I know you have a busy agenda. I have nothing but positive things to report about your 2024 audit. It was completed timely and efficiently. We issued an audit, the audit with a report date of December 23rd, 2024. That was very important for us and for everyone involved to try and beat the holidays so we weren't having to worry about this over Christmas and New Years. Just want to give a big thanks to your finance and accounting team here at the county, Ms. Carla Ritter, Lori, Reggie and all their team. Just like to remind councilmen that just because an audit's going on does not mean their day-to-day responsibility cease. An audit's not an easy thing to go through. We ask a lot of questions. We ask for a lot of documentation. And so just thank you very much for all their hard work. I know some long nights and weekends were involved in making sure we got this audit done on time for everyone. Very pleased to report that we did not have any audit adjustments detected by the audit. And typically when that occurs, there are no what are called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control. And therefore, we did not issue any recommendations for improvement in the county's internal control over financial reporting. So congratulations. We issued what's called an unmodified audit opinion, and I believe you can find that starting in the thick, what we call ACFR document. And the unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can give that the financial statements are fairly presented. That is not absolute assurance. I'd like to remind you that we cannot audit every single $5 transaction you had for the year, especially when talking about a county of this size. But as I'm sure you're aware, we audit samples to take assurance that the population as a whole is fairly stated. Because the county spends over $750,000 in federal money, we also have to perform what's called a single audit, which you're all nodding, so I can tell you're aware of that. And the major programs we audited this year were the HUD CDBG grant and also the American Rescue Plan Act grant. And we also issued an unmodified clean opinion on your compliance with your federal years. Each year you submit your ACFR to the GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association, and they review it in order to determine if you can receive the excellence in financial reporting. And you did receive that award for fiscal year 2023, and we plan to submit that again for '24. In fact, it was already submitted because that goes in before year end at December 31st. Any questions about anything I've said so far? I've got just a couple more bullet points, but that was kind of the overview of the So hearing none, I'll just talk a little bit about numbers. And you may have already received some more recent numbers since I'm still talking about June 30, '24, so not to confuse there. But as of June 30, '24, the county's statement net position was very strong. You had unrestricted net position before any budgetary constraints of about $292 million. During 2024, you made all of your regularly scheduled debt payments, which is great. After year end, actually in November '24, I'm sure you're aware, you issued a new debt issuance as well. Your net position on your government-wide statements improved by approximately $180 million compared to prior year as revenues exceeded expenses. And the revenues largely increased just due to the increase in the tax base and also some increase in charges for services and also interest income in the Public Works Department. If you take a look at your general fund, which I know is usually of most concern, council people and also to management, you have a very healthy balance sheet within your general fund. The general fund had about $133.7 million in the fund balance, and approximately $110 million of that is unrestricted. But again, that does not include any budgetary constraints that have already been levied against that unrestricted fund balance. When you look at expenses, your expenses did increase approximately $77.4 million compared to the prior year. Now, that was largely in the Public Works and Culture and Recreation Departments. As I'm sure you recall, there is a large appropriation to the Charleston Library in fiscal year '24. Also contributing to expense increases were pay increases for employees, approximately 3.5% in May of '23, then again 4% in July of '23. And so in total, increases in salaries and benefits in the general fund was approximately 20 million or 11.5%. I know there's a lot of numbers I'm throwing at you there. That was pretty much all I planned to cover. We always stay abreast of any new GASB announcements that have to be implemented into your financial statements, and there was one this year, GASB 100, accounting changes and error corrections, but that was considered to be not applicable. So it was a pretty easy year for implementing new GASB standards. We've already spoken, Lori and Reggie, about next year's GASB 101, and we'll make sure, and that's related to accrued compensated absences, and so we're going to ensure that that gets implemented properly for your fiscal year 2025 audit. Now, that was a lot. I apologize. Are there any other questions or any concerns for the '24 audit?
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, and thank you, sir, for being here. As an accountant, you know, I still have clients that are trying to pull together their 2023 tax returns before February of 2025, so to pull together this CAFER, or whatever it's called now, in the appropriate amount of time is very impressive. Some high-level things, and maybe if you don't know the questions or answers, you could just respond back to me. But we maintain our AAA bond rating. Are there any other counties in the state besides us that have AAA bond ratings? Do you know?
I cannot answer that. I apologize.
I'd have to look it up, but I'm pretty sure Greenville County.
Greenville.
Just Greenville and us? Okay.
Greenville.
How about countrywide? Do we know that, countrywide?
There are about 3,000 counties in the nation, and less than 60 of those have a triple, AAA rating.
That's impressive. Okay. The accountant mentioned the awards we've gotten for the CAFER and the supplement or whatever it was for the budget. We've received that award a number of years in a row. Is that correct?
Yes, we've received the audit award as well as the budget award for 36 years. And for the last five years, we've also received what they call a triple crown, which includes the, one of the smaller reports, the popular annual report.
Okay. Concerns going forward, maybe for the auditor or the staff, or, you know, what are concerns going forward? We've got change of administration. I mean, what can we, what do we need to look out for in the coming year? Anything off the top of your head?
I mean, from my perspective, I don't think our risk assessment changes much with the changes. I know you backfilled Lori's position, which is great. I know Ms. Carla Ritter was extremely intelligent finance director for you all, but I believe Lori will do a great job in her shoes as well.
Okay. That's good to hear from the external auditor. That's great.
Yep.
Do you have anything you want to add, Mac?
I think a lot of the other questions are going to probably be covered with budgetary topics about how our revenue stream looks going forward and how we balance that out with the expenditures that we have, but nothing related to the audit.
You mentioned $110 million in unrestricted cash. Is that, don't we try to have like three months' cash balance on hands? Is that correct?
We've used the threshold of 30%. That seemed to be what got the county its AAA ratings. Right now, we're a little bit above that, and we are trying to utilize that in our annual budgets, but not do it all at one time, so it's, could have a drastic impact on services or funding in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Toon, thank you and staff. That's very impressive.
Any further questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
And following from Mr. Brantley, that Charleston County finds itself in the 2% of all the counties in the United States with a AAA bond rating. That's exceptional, and that's a credit to our staff and the work they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you and thank our staff. Thank you, Lori, Reggie, Carla. I know Carla's retired now, and Mac, everyone else. Phil, great job. Thank y'all very much. Thank you very much, sir. We really appreciate working with you and look forward to seeing you next year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
End of my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sasse. At this time, we convened our housing committee meeting. Members of the housing committee include Mr. Warman, who's chair, Councilman Darby, Councilman Kowalski, Vice Chair Kowalski, Councilman Sasse. Mr. Warman?
Mr. Chairman, with that introduction, I think the first item on the agenda are the minutes of October 10th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So the main item for the agenda here tonight, we're going to receive a presentation sort of updating the status of the property at 995 Morrison. I'll also let you know there's a sheet on your desks. We did have a meeting with the city, myself and the chairman, and Mayor Cogswell met. You know, we're basically, and we'll get into this, but we're basically faced with a sort of fork in the road here where we can put this out for an RFP ourselves through some process, or we can, as everyone knows, there's a $30 million offer on the table. So, you know, whether we have a recommendation or if any out of it, that's sort of the focus of the discussion. I will say that I think the presentation we're about to receive is more from our staff's perspective of what the steps forward on that RFP would be. And then the sort of outline you've got is more about, you know, obviously the city's offering to buy it. They would be willing to work with us on us doing our own RFP, and that sort of is outlining some of the framework they'd like to see that move forward. So it looks like we're going to have some form of negotiation one way or another here, but that, given that context, I will turn it over to Joel, who is prepared to give a sort of update on where we're at developing the property ourselves, quote unquote.
Sure. Thank you, committee members and council. I'm just going to give a brief introduction here. What we are working on, staff, what my division of staff is working on is the plan development amendments that we've been working with the city with for a few months, and we want to give you the status of that. There's a consultant actually working on the RFP, which is a little bit separate, but in order for that RFP to get queued up properly, we wanted to do some amendments to the Laurel Island PUD. And I'm going to introduce Mary Twille with Seaman Whiteside. She's going to give the presentation to describe where we are today.
All right. Good evening. Thanks, Chairman Middleton and members of the housing committee. I'm here to give an update on 995 Morrison Drive and what we've been doing recently to work with the county on the development of this parcel. As you know, one of the goals is to have more affordable housing, so we've been looking at what we could do with this property. That comes along with it higher density and an increase of height. We also want this to be context-sensitive design. This is a unique piece of property in the city of Charleston, and so this really needs to fit within the architectural fabric and be a viable development in the city. So this is under the Laurel Island Plan Development. So in order for us to do what the county would like to do in terms of adding more units, changes would need to be made to the Laurel Island PD, and I'll talk a little bit about what needs to be revised in a little bit. We met with the city July 9th of this past year. We went over some of the ideas that we had. We heard feedback from them about adjusting the height, scale and mass, making this really be something that the city would approve. And so we came back to them in September of this past year with the revised scenario. They liked what we had, so we are moving forward with that option. Just to give you guys a little bit of context for the site, it's located, shown on this map in red. You've got Morrison Drive to the east, views of the Cooper River. The tech center is to the north, has a lot of office space, about six stories tall. To the west is Singleton Park, and that's a really great opportunity there. There's a lot of mixed residential there, condos, single-family residential. And then to the south, you've got the Marsh and New Market Creek. In the middle, you've got the Coolblow Street. That's the access that would be the bridge that would connect the peninsula to Laurel Island, so that's an important element to note there. And then also, you'll see in blue, the Limoa Line. This is something new that's called the limit of moderate wave action. That's basically a fancy word for saying this site might flood. So you can only develop, your minimum floor elevation would be 14, so you can't develop on the ground floor. So that also limits some of the development opportunities there. So we looked at various scenarios. The PD allows for an eight-story height. So when we looked at the first scenario one, the eight-story tall buildings, we looked at just maximizing the site and what we could get for that, that yielded about 1,300 units. We looked at then scenario two, the city asked us for a little bit of more articulation. And so with more architectural features, keeping the eight stories, we yielded about 1,200 total units there. And finally, scenario three at the bottom was the sort of preferred alternative with the county and the city. This gives a lot more articulation. You can see where it steps up from building height three to six on the Singleton Park in the residential side, stepping up to more dense areas, 12 to 10 stories here. So really trying to look at the overall development and how this can be a viable development within the city of Charleston and be based in reality. So on the left side, the current PD outlines what this parcel is governed by, and on the right side are the proposed revisions we would have to the PD in order to move forward with the development. So the current PD says that the 995 can be eight stories. We are looking at three stories, three to six stories up to eight to 12 stories. There were 305 multifamily units slated for this parcel. We are looking at upwards of 1,440 units with 80% of that being workforce housing. We would like to remove the tech corridor overlay requirements, which are requiring up to 50% to be office space. There was slated to be 250,000 square feet of office, which is pretty significant. This PD was developed and approved in 2020. Things are pretty different now. The viability of office right now is a lot lower than residential. The PD has 26,550 square feet of retail, and this, the proposed revisions to the PD would have about 53,000 square feet. We also wanted to confirm that there wouldn't be any significant changes to the traffic analysis. That so far looks pretty good. And then the city also wanted to see revisions to the architectural guidelines and the site so that this really felt like something that would be a development that they would be able to approve. Happy to answer any questions you guys have about where we are. We could submit for the PD amendments, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the committee? I'll start with the members of the committee and then I think, well, I'm sorry, Councilman Kowalski, I'm going to go with Ms. Honeycutt first, but I saw her first, and I think that is the rules of council. But nevertheless, we'll get to you afterwards.
The only question I have is one of the, I don't know if you would call it controversies we've had, is whether or not the tech corridor overlay even applies. Mr. Evans, can you please articulate the county's position on whether or not the plan development supersedes the previous zoning, which included the tech overlay?
I'm going to pass that on to the legal department, I believe, if Natalie doesn't mind. Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Mr. Evans. Ms. Honeycutt, I would love to answer that question. I do think that it poses a legal issue, one in which we've had some conversations with the city about. And so I would suggest that if we were to have a more in-depth discussion about that question and me provide a full response, that we do that in executive session.
Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you. I've heard you say that the, I forget what the, it was a fancy way of saying that you can't develop the first floor.
Yes.
What is the projection for 10 years out, 20 years out, and 50 years out in that? If we can't develop the first floor now, what's going to happen as time goes on as the water's rising even more? Do we have projections on that? And then I have a follow-up question. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, currently, you know, things are changing all the time, right? When this PD was approved, we didn't have the Limoa Line restricting building development. That's something newer that we're dealing with now, so it will continue to change. As you know, there is an anticipated wall at elevation 12 that would go around the peninsula. There's lots of considerations and, you know, anything could change, I would say. As we can see, within five years, a lot's changed with this PD and what we thought could happen with this parcel. So what we know today is elevation 14 is the minimum elevated, first floor elevation that you can have. So the ground floor could only be parking or public open space or art, cannot be used for, you know, residential or retail.
Do we anticipate it going to the second floor over time? The restriction on commercial development is, I mean, what I guess what I'm asking is the projection that the water level's going to go even higher over time and cause more issues with the building?
Well, so I know at least the water, the water plan and sea level rise are planning for elevation seven right now, so that would be within the next 25 years. So, I mean, I think it's pretty safe, the 14-foot elevation. It's hard for me to say what the future holds.
And second, we did, our own appraisal was 38 million, correct?
I think it was 31 to 32.
You might be correct, Mr. Kowalski. Mr. Swanson, remember? 38. Yes, yes, sir. 38.
And the offer is considerably less than that, and I understand there's reason for some aid to explain it. And then the third question, since this is in Councilman Warman's district and it's that's not, well, then I just asked that question about the difference in the appraisals and the offer and what that means and...
That's outside of the planning and zoning. We're just charged with, with moving forward with council's last directive, which was to get the highest and best and mixed use out of the property. We have a consultant, Development Strategies, that's been working on that, creating the development book. And for our team here, we're just trying to make that runway a little smoother with this plan development amendment so that the development book will be as successful as it can be.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Moody?
Mr. Warman?
Couple of questions. I would follow up Mr. Kowalski's question. The appraised value, that 38 was highest in, that was assuming we could get everything we possibly wanted, retail, hotel, whatever. That was the highest and best use value, right? So as you diminish from that value, so goes the appraised value. Is that correct? I see heads nodding. Ma'am, for the PD proposals you're talking about, would the city, you know, we can do whatever we want on our side, but would they be okay with the proposed changes we would make to the PD? I mean, notwithstanding what Ms. Hamm said, taking that out of play, that's still a sticking point, I guess, but would they, would they be agreeable to all those? We could do all this stuff and they go, nah, but that's no good.
I believe they would. We've met with them twice and made changes to satisfy their requests, and I don't see any hurdles there based off of our two meetings with them.
Thank you, Mr. Warman.
Also, Chairman Middleton?
Yes, sir. Based on our meeting as well relative to the tech overlay district, they were willing to remove that.
With the proposed, if we actually revise the PD?
Yeah.
Mr. Boykin, am I seeing?
I have a question, but I'm not really sure who to address it to. This is in our, well, if we sold it, the money would go in our capital expenditure category. I guess my question is if we go about this on our own, given the particular issues Mr. Moody brought up, what is our rate of return on capturing the value of that property over time so those funds could be used in our capital expenditures? I mean, currently, right now, we've got the Azalea buildout, we've got the Boeing building that we put the board of elections into that we were looking at as a lease purchase option. I'd like to know how do we realize the 30 or 38 million, whatever the case may be, as revenue that comes back to the candidate can be used in these capital projects?
Well, I'm happy to, if there's anyone from staff who wants to take that, I mean, I think that's a fair question. I have in my mind how I would think that would work, but if someone wants to take it or, well, let me just say this. Well, just a moment, Mr. Middleton. What I'm hearing from staff and what I'm hopefully not reading too far in between the lines is that we would need to clear out these zoning hurdles. We would put it out to RFP. The RFP process would select, you know, a purchaser, and then we'd enter into, you know, a purchase and sale agreement with that purchaser. I'm assuming there'd be some due diligence period. I mean, that's pretty typical in these things, so I don't know. I'd let experts weigh in on what that timeline looks like. My guess would be RFP process by the end of the year, and I don't know when that money would hit. I mean, I don't know how long the due diligence period might be on a deal like this. Mr. Sasse is raising his hand, and he might have a better idea of that, so I'm going to ask him if he can weigh in on that, and if not, then maybe our staff can weigh in on it as well.
Well, thank you, sir. I don't mean to undercut staff. I'd like to add to what Mr. Moody said. You know, we had an appraisal done that gave us several different scenarios of how much money, if it was this much developed, we'd get this much money. If we had this much development, we'd get that much money. And there was a pretty good range, I think, from maybe 25 to 35, 38, somewhere in there, depending on those scenarios. And of course, what we need to remember, too, is we already sold the center out of this. We sold the middle part of the, out for the road. I think we got about $6 million for that. So whoever gets this piece of property is going to want those three parcels together, the two end parcels and the road. And what, what our situation would be, if we, and I'm in, I'm in commercial real estate, if we were to put this on the market, it would be on the market for a certain period of time, and people would deliver bids, and the bids would all be very well thought out, but they would have a lot of due diligence requirements that may take a year or two to finish. There's a piece of, there's a property at the corner of UG Street and Morrison Drive right now that Jack Owens has under, has for sale. It's two and a half acres, and it's for sale for $25 million or thereabout, and he's had it under contract twice. And what happens is you get these developers that are willing to tell you they'll buy it today, then they give you a long list of items they want to get checked off, and it might take you a year or two to go through those items if you can get them all checked off. If you don't get them checked off, they just walk, and then you're back to square one, where you haven't, you haven't, you haven't gained a cent, but you've spent money holding the property and taking care of it, well, whatever you had to do to insure it or what you had to do to it during that holding period. I think we need to realize that we do have two big scenarios here. If we... think we need to realize that we do have two big scenarios here. If we put it out for development, it may be several years before we get paid. If we, if we sell it to the city, we could get paid this year and they have the money. And the city is not gonna put us, give us two years with a due diligence that has to figure out, I don't think, to get it sold. And I think we have a real, you know, and I don't know what the number would be from a developer, a developer would come in and buy it. Say they said 35. And the city's willing to pay 30? And you got the money today or in 90 days? And you're not waiting two years to get the money? Well, that's a decision you gotta make. That's an easy decision. When you know you have the money here, you can get it in 90 days or you might have to wait two years or four years. You don't know what the outcome is. So to me, that's, that's real important, that we think about the timing that's gonna be involved in either of these scenarios. And these developers, they'll, they'll come in and they'll tell you, yeah, we'll pay you, we'll pay you what you want for it. And the next thing you know, they're negotiating with you, well, you know, we didn't know about the limo line, so that's another million dollars we're gonna take off, or something like this. And it just works that way. They beat you up and, and finally, and if you do get them to the closing table, it might be a couple of years, if you get them, if you get them to the closing table. Thank you, Mr. Warman.
Thank you, Mr. Sasse. That was, I think, went to the point. I would like to see if anyone who's been working on this has, you know, any thoughts on, on if that, I mean, that seems accurate to me, but I don't, I'm not an expert in the field. So does that sound like a pretty accurate summary of the process? Seeing nods. Okay. Yes. Mr. Boykin.
So just to follow up, you know, and I'm no financial genius down here, but it seems that we have a dollar amount certain from the city's offer. They have the funds on hand. Those funds could be transported, transferred to the county in a relatively short period of time. They certainly have a vested interest in workforce housing and affordable housing on their own. They also govern themselves. And they can change the zoning and the restrictions any way they want to without us having to depend on that cooperation moving forward.
Thank you.
I, I go back to the bird in the hand approach. I mean, the dollar amount seems very consistent, close enough. And it, again, I'm not gonna have the staff go through all of our expenses that we already know we have lined up for Azalea and the potential purchase of the Boeing building. But it just seems that getting the 30 million in our coffers would be timely in addressing those financial needs. And but also, you know, knowing that the property would go to the purpose that the county wanted it to, which would be affordable and workforce housing.
Very good. And yet, Mr. Pryor.
I'm sitting here listening and I, I concur if we are going to sell the property. But I think we owe it to the public as well, too. I know we have a policy that the money has to go back into properties. But we can always change that because I would like to see some of this money maybe be moved to the revolving loan fund, maybe some land banking, and then maybe some, you know, other critical repairs for homes. Just because we got this $30 million, you know, we already had it planned out how we were gonna pay for these other stuff anyway. So we, if we're going to take $30 million from, which would have been housing, I'd like to see this council put some of the money back. And we were always talking about how could we find the community loan fund, but this would be a way we could do that. And so before everybody gets to say, let's take the money and just, you know, do this, I think we owe it to some of the people, too, to look out in the rural areas and see if we can buy some land and then work something out with some of these companies to put affordable slash workforce housing in those areas. But just to say, take the $30 million and then, you know, we gonna pay for this building, I pay for that building. I would wanna discuss that because even though it's policy, we can always change policy and the rules and policies.
Okay, very good. All right. Well...
Mr. Darby, that's your district. I'd like to hear from you.
I'm just, wait a minute. I mean, it seemed to me, everything's already been to me, the priority. There's no need to say anything, Mr. Pryor. Because my first priority would be why the fever pitch of selling the land? Why not use this for some future council when there's a desperate need of something? That would be number one. Number two is, if we must sell the land, won't sell it for $30 million. By no means. It's almost like I have a 1964 GTO. You want my car, you could just give me a price. I'm not accepting $10,000. I may take 15 and 20, but just because you offered me 10 doesn't mean I'm gonna take it. So, and then the third point is, if we are going to sell this, why not deal with the problem of the poor? We've got Vietnam veterans, sir, without houses. And I wouldn't wanna see all of this just for, no offense, sir, you know, capital improvement. I, I do think that we have to do something with our Vietnam veterans. So I would, wouldn't mind part of that in terms of capital projects, but to say that the entirety of it goes, I would say something has to be done with the problem of the poor, particular area of housing. So again, my first preference would not be to sell it. Sell it for a future council. Number two is, if we must sell, don't sell beyond 35 to 38 million. And if we do sell, let's do something at least for the Vietnam veterans and other types of homelessness. All of it, perhaps, no. But all of it for capital project, I wouldn't concur with that either. So those would be my thoughts, sir.
You.
Okay.
Do we have a draft PD, like a revised PD already made?
I do not know the answer to that. I would ask, do we, thank you, Ms. Honeycutt, do we have a, like an application basically ready to go?
Yes, we do. We have an application and a revised plan development that shows the text changes and the graphics changes needed. So it's ready to be turned in.
I would ask that that be circulated to council
Okay.
in conjunction with the original PD that currently is on.
Yeah, I think we should do that. I'd like to take a look at that myself. Mr. Cabroski, can you, I'm sorry, I'm, what's, I'm acknowledging your, your question, Mr. Cabroski. I'm sorry, I was thinking through the PD issue.
I was just asking, if we were to make changes with what we do with the money, would we have to do that before we'd sell it? Or could that be done afterwards?
Before you close, only.
Close is what I meant. Then go to some of the concerns of earmarking for affordable housing as opposed to what we'd have to do now. When would that have to be done?
The appropriation of the funds does not have to happen before you receive them. You can make that decision at a later time, either through an annual budget process or a separate appropriation action.
So wouldn't have to precede the sale, is what you're saying?
No, it would not.
All right, thank you.
So what you're saying is, Mr. Darby?
Mr. Pryor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pryor.
So what you're saying, Mr. Darby, we don't have to change the policy. It's just five members of council that will determine where they wanna send the money. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Not specifically. I was just talking about the timing of it as to when you get the money appropriated. If you think about the sale of Charleston Center, that we received those funds.
Right.
And then later tonight, we have an update to the CIP. We're asking council to appropriate those funds. So just the order of getting the funds appropriated, it does not have to happen before the sale agreement is finalized.
But, all right, but what I'm asking specifically with this, if we want this specifically to go toward more housing, some type of affordable housing, workforce, veterans, would we need to amend our policy that we have now that says the money has to go into capital improvement? Is that a legal question? Because I don't wanna wait until it's sold and then we come back and say, well, you should have done this before we received the funds.
I'm happy to take a look at the policy and, and provide that information to, to you all.
Yeah, because if it needs changing, I think we ought to change it, you know, before this thing closes.
Sure.
Very good. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Warman. Again, not on this committee, but maybe a happy medium might be Mr. Pryor, that we have staff tell us, bring to us, you know, Mr. Boykin mentioned some properties that may be short of money or cost overruns or whatever, what, maybe some recommendations from staff, where money could go as far as capital projects go, what might be left over that could go to renovations, that could go to veterans, that could go to wherever. Maybe a way that, let staff kinda give us an idea how to chop it up.
Mr. Pryor.
But if we weren't going to sell this property, where would the money come from anyway? We already started the project. We would have never started a project if we didn't know where the money was gonna come from. So we do know where the money is gonna come from, but this just may be a way of saying, okay, let's just, you know, move this forward and then take that other money and move it somewhere else. So there is a funding mechanism for what we're doing right now. Am I correct, Mr. Darby?
The capital improvement plan anticipated that we would have the sale of property, both Charleston Center and 995 Morrison, and apply that to construction on, on Azalea for the EMS project. And it's part of a plan, which has future actions related to it. Now, what Mr. Moody just said, that we need to, to provide you some additional information on if funds could be allocated to different, to both of those areas and what that allocation might look like. We would need to update our capital improvement plan and, and vet some numbers before we could do that. But I'm not gonna say that's out of the realm of possibility, that if, if the desire of council is to allocate some to the capital improvement plan and some to other items, as long as it meets the legal hurdle, that that is a possibility.
But if, if it doesn't work out, we can always go and bond the money, correct?
There may be some ramifications as needing a mileage increase to be able to bonds more than what we had already anticipated in the capital improvement plan. But that would be something that we would have to look at as we update that plan and the debt management plan for the next budget cycle.
Because it just seems a little strange that we would go and take on a project, not knowing if we, you know, it's one of these things, if we sell it, if we didn't sell it, then where would the money come from?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pryor. I'll weigh in. I'm sorry, did, Mr. Darby, is that?
Just one question, sir. If this were to go to the city of Charleston, what would prevent them from saying, well, we're gonna do 60% workforce, or 50%? What would be in place to maintain this 80%?
I will put that question to our presenters. I would say that, you know, if we do go the sale option, I do think we will have, you know, opportunities in the deed and in the sales contract to put in restrictions. I would like to see them. I actually have a follow-up question after that, but I'll, I'll ask our staff if they can weigh in on that question.
Well, I'll have to have an answer nice. I don't wanna prolong the time, sir, but at a given time, please, sir.
Fair enough. Very good. I did want to ask, you know, I know we had a council work session in October of 2022, where we contemplated $25 million in return and sort of 100 million, 100 million, good gosh, 100 units at 60 AMI and 100 units at 30 AMI. What I'm hearing now is that we're looking at, again, if we did this ourselves, quote unquote, we're not talking about anything at that low of AMI anymore, it seems. Okay. Well, that's a bit of a concern to me. Oh. Councilman Warman, we, we would continue to reach out to the housing authority, which could potentially provide some deeper affordability, lower than 120. Okay. And since we're, and, okay, yeah. I guess that was sort of my question is, obviously, we amend the PD to put in restrictions, but that doesn't prohibit us from going lower than that or going deeper into the AMI. And, and so, okay, I see what you're saying there. I won't prolong this any, anymore. I will say this, for my part, I'm, I'm much more interested in the idea of, if we are gonna sell it, contributing it to housing, the proceeds to housing. I'm a little bit surprised that we based the capital improvement plan on that, but I, I think I've looked at it and I, I do see that that does seem to be the case. But, you know, we've got the city at the table here. They're, they've got $30 million in TIF money that, to my understanding, they wanna spend on housing one way or another. And so my view is, if we don't look at this as the city versus the county, if we look at this as the whole community, we've got two pots of assets, $30 million in city money for housing and a big piece of land that the county owns that we were gonna do housing with one way or another. And I would hate to see us sort of cannibalize that, where, you know, we take the 30 million off the table. We probably do. I do think we would get the same housing or maybe better than, than we'd get ourselves, for all I know. But it does seem to me that to maximize, you know, the community-wide resources, it would require us to kind of reinvest that back into housing. Because again, I think their $30 million is going to some sort of housing program if we reject that offer. So those are my thoughts. I don't know if we're prepared to entertain a motion right now. I think we've got
I think we are.
some information requests that need to come back, for sure. So I, I would put it to the, I'll put it to the, the group here. Again, it would just be the committee members right now. But, you know, I think this has been a productive conversation moving it forward, but it does sound like there's maybe some, some info to be filled in here one way or another. Anyone, anyone to, any motions going once, going twice?
Mr. Middleton. Chair, I would move that we accept the offer for the purchase of the property located at 995 and 993. I think it's two different parcels, but one collective that we're talking about by the city of Charleston. And they have offered 30 million, but certainly in the negotiation, I'm certain that we can see, you know, up to $35 million.
Okay, that's a motion. Is it, is there a second?
Is the motion then, is the, um, accept 35 million? I mean, this, what, I understand what I'd be voting on.
I think it's engage in negotiations.
There would just be the engage in negotiations without agreeing to a price, is what you're saying.
Well, let me see this with the chairman. I mean, if we were to do this, what warranty would I have upon the personal pronoun, that some of these proceeds would go towards land and housing? Because if indeed the pact said capital improvements, what are we gonna do for those who are in need? So if there is, this need to be a type of change in the recommendation, sir, because I wouldn't wanna say we're gonna sell this to the city and they end up, and we are saying all of these dollars are gonna go to capital improvement and individuals such as Vietnam veterans get nothing. I would not want to go that far, sir.
I would be willing to amend that motion, certainly based on the negotiations and the process that we heard iteratively already articulated, that council itself, either through an administrative rule, policy change, or directly five individuals then directing staff to move in that direction based on these categories that we wish to divide the money. Those seem to have been acceptable ways to do that.
Well, would that not have to be upfront prior to the disposition?
Under either of those circumstances, I don't believe that it would need to, to be upfront.
No, no, go, go ahead. I'm sorry. I just wanna butt in after Ms. Hamm's done. Sorry, Ms. Hamm. Sorry, I neglected to kind of keep the, keep, keep everyone on, on track with the clerk. And I believe Mr. Boykin has some commentary.
Just a comment, not to get into the voting. Is it possible that we would realize a increase to our general funds because these funds are going to our capital improvement program? If there's, if that creates a net surplus of funding, should the calculations bear that out, that may present an opportunity in the future that we could get funds from our general fund that were not necessary to support those capital projects. I can't say that's gonna happen because that's been factored in. But if that 30 million were to change the, the need or whatever, the balance of our general funds, it might be an obvious counsel not to have to worry about robbing Peter to pay Paul, but to be able to secure funding like Mr. Darby was asking from the general fund, if we had fund balance or something along those lines.
Mr. Guile, I think that would be a question for you.
So the, the proceeds would not go into the general fund? So I don't think that would create a surplus that you're, you're thinking about. But there are other parameters that we could look at. But I, I think that if, if you're looking at changing priorities, that would be something that the council would need to agree and give some direction to the administrator.
Well, I think, and we can certainly do that, I think. But, you know, I think, to the extent there is money going into, going into the capital improvements fund from the general fund, I mean, I think that might be the question. Am I right about that, Mr. Boykin? If, if there is any, okay, I'm getting to the answer. There's not any.
And I don't know this as well, I'm asking the question. If the realization of that $30 million now, that we could have and probably invest or draw interest on it or accrue interest in the, of the buildout of these projects, if we realize that those funds put us in a... a situation where we had more funds in the capital projects funding than we, that were necessary for those projects, do we now have any of our general funds that are going into that fund each fiscal year, that might not be required, or as much be required?
We're not utilizing funds from the general fund to fund those capital projects.
Then I was mistaken, thank you.
And I do think, we do have a motion on the floor here, Mr. Sasse, then Mr. Pryor, and I'd like us to get to the motion. I actually would like a clarification on what it is from the clerk before we vote.
Well, I would, I would like a clarification. I tend to agree with the chairman. I think we should begin negotiations with the city. And as far as the disposition of the funds, I don't, I don't know if that's a caveat that we have to do tonight. It's something that we all have to work out together. The main thing is, we're trying to decide is whether we want to sell this piece of property. And, and so I am, I'm going to vote with the chairman on that.
So is that a second?
That's a second.
Might have had one, but, okay. Mr. Kibrowski, let me, let me ask. I'm sorry, Mr. Pryor was next, and then Madam Clerk, I'd like us to get a clarification of what's actually on the table. And we do, I mean, we have folks waiting, I think, at this point, so I'd kind of like us to move it along.
Quick question. So did I just hear that audit gentleman said we had, we took in 180 million more than we budgeted for in this budget? That's what I heard. I wrote it down.
That was the improvement in the net position. The net position is not the perspective that we budget at. I would say that we might need some budgetary translations to what the audit actually says, that we can do in the upcoming months, to help understand where we stand and what the path forward is.
So will you be able to give us a final number?
We don't have 180 million that.
Pardon me?
We do not have 180 million.
I know, but, but I would like to know how much funding that we, you know, we went over than we anticipated. If it's not 180, it's got to be something.
We will work on that answer.
And how soon could we get that answer? Because the budget cycle was over in last June.
I think before the next committee meeting or council meeting, we should be able to have something available.
Thank you, sir. That would, that would help out grateful, too. That would help out a whole lot.
Mr. Kibrowski, while the clerk is conferring, let's, I'll hear from you, but let's.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to clarify what the motion is that we're voting on. I think.
No, I think that's what I'm asking Madam Clerk to do just now.
That's what I was asking.
I just wrote this down based on the conversation that y'all have had in the, after the motion was made. So enter negotiations to sell 993, 995 Morrison Drive to the city of Charleston, based on the offer received from the city, with the understanding that the final negotiations will be approved by county council.
All right, let me say this, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Darby.
Sir, if there is a definitive number in there between 30 to 35 million, I'm going to oppose it, sir. That it won't come out of committee, because I don't want to sell the property for 30 million. Can't get 35, I'm not for it, sir.
So 30 to 35 million?
I would say 30 to 35 million, sir.
Okay.
In the negotiation. All right.
Is that correct?
Well, I'll say this, y'all. I mean, I don't think I can vote for something to enter into negotiation. I mean, I don't know that entering into negotiations, I don't know how much we need council action for that, but I think that's fair enough, if that's what we want to do. I'm not going to be able to vote for something unless that stipulation. I understand the position that it's, it's something we could do on the back end. I don't disagree that we probably could do it on the back end, but I can't enter. I would not be comfortable entering into those negotiations until we knew that, you know, we're not going to be cannibalizing those, those $30 million, and that's going to be moving forward. I don't understand that to be really in any way part of this motion. So, I mean.
I thought it was part of the motion that the chairman wanted.
It was not what I just, was just read out.
So based on, Ms. Hamm, maybe you can provide some context.
I actually just texted the clerk and was going to ask, because there was some dialogue back and forth with regards to, Mr. Chairman, your motion, whether or not you were considerate of a, it seemed like an amendment to include some terminology with regards to some stipulations with where the funds from the purchase go.
Would go. And I did say that, and then we got into the whole discussion, and that got lost.
Okay. And so, I mean, who is the second on this? Because I don't think Mr. Sasse is going to be amenable to that amendment. I would ask for that amendment to be made, but.
So Mr. Kibrowski is willing to second, Mr. Sasse may be willing to second?
The amendment to the motion being that, I mean, what, how would we phrase that? That the money will be used for?
Based on the offer received from the city of Charleston, with the understanding that some portion of the money will be used to fund affordable housing priorities. Because y'all are talking, I'm just trying to verbalize what I'm doing.
That was a valiant effort, Ms. Salisbury. Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to change the language from workforce, I mean, to, from affordable to workforce, please. As the terms are synonymous.
Okay.
You're saying change it from affordable to workforce?
Well, Mr. Darby, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam.
No, sir, I just wanted to, I think that the clerk likely used that language, because you, as a council, have established your affordable housing priorities in the Housing Our Future Plan, and that gives you a lot of what you, you have indicated, and what Mr. Werman have indicated, some level of where you would like some of those funds to go.
I understand it, but affordable is not comparable to workforce here. That's what I'm not, that's what I want to understand.
As we view, well, fair enough. I would suggest maybe we say affordable and workforce. I will say, affordable, as we've used it in our Housing Our Future Plan, I'm 99% certain, is going to refer to lower levels of AMI. So that would actually be subsidizing folks who are making less money than workforce, which, as I understand, is generally 80 to 20. But I think, for flexibility purposes, if we want to put some significance on that language, I would say affordable and workforce. I wouldn't want to limit ourselves in that, in that way.
Okay.
All right, are those, okay.
Do you want me to read it again?
Probably so, and then let's call the roll.
Okay. The motion is to enter negotiations to sell 993 and 995 Morrison Drive to the city of Charleston, for an amount to be negotiated between 30 and 35 million, based on the offer received from the city of Charleston, with the understanding that some portion of the proceeds will be used to fund affordable and workforce housing priorities, and the final negotiations will be approved by county council.
Very good. Okay. Can we, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Yes.
And Mr. Sasse?
Darby.
The time, but did I hear somebody said 38 million possibility?
That, that, Mr. Darby, that was.
But that's not, a hotel is not going to be involved in it.
Mr. Pryor, thank you. All right, let's call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sasse, can I just make sure you're still seconding that motion I read?
I am.
Okay, all right. Mr. Boykin, I'm sorry, wait, there's only four members of this committee. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. That concludes our housing, special housing committee agenda for the evening. Thank you for bearing with us, everyone. I will return it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Werman, and thank you to all members of council. We're going to move right into our finance committee agenda, where I am the chair, and all members of council participate. Item one, approval of minutes.
Both approve.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commendations to the clerk.
Thank you.
Posers nay. Eyes have it. Item two, consent agenda, commissioning services, 2A.
Both approve and B.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Eyes have it. Item three, item from the chief financial officer, update on county code of ordinances.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Item four, from the general services directorate, 4A, tri-county biological center, science center.
Both approve and B.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Eyes have it. 4B.
Please approve.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying.
Or do both of them. Yes, today, I asked him to clarify.
Aye. All right. So this is the capital improvement plan update. You may want to take a look at this and make certain that, you know, because this is what he's.
We can take, well, we got a council meeting right after this.
That's right. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you so much. Eyes have it. And the recommendation from our housing committee meeting, 5A, disposition of the property located, probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you so much. The eyes have it. At this time, it's 6:32, and we are so poised to be on track. Council members, you all need a break in between. So let's take a two-minute break, and we will resume at 6:34.
Mr. Pryor, did you second that item about the capital improvement plan?
All right, it's 6:34. We're asking members of council if they would return.
We have a new chair. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Palestine is becoming.
Two, three, four. Yeah.
All right, council members, we're ready to get started. Two-minute break.
Oh, yeah.
Two-minute break is up. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we have five members of council present. We're going to get started. We will begin with our, we are, we are ready to get started. Thank you all so very much. We do have five members of council present, so we don't want to belabor anyone else's time at this time. Public comments?
Yes, sir. We have Alfred Peeler, followed by Gillian Bergeron.
Hey, council members. Alfred Peeler, 1133 Arthur Drive. I am here again with our Elbit Out of SC Coalition, to comment on our county's continued contribution to the genocide in Palestine. As we've said before, this body has financially incentivized Elbit Systems, which is a company whose profits go up, the more families that it kills, to open up shop in the holy city and construct weapons of death. Since the last session, we have continued our weekly pickets outside of Elbit that we do, where I became the second member of our coalition to be purposely struck by an employee's car. We have filed police reports, but we do not expect much to come of it. We have also emailed each member of this council, asking for a conversation, and have not had a response. So we wanted to come back again today and publicly ask for a meeting with the new council chair, Kylan Middleton. Last year, leaders in the AME Church called for an end to financial aid to Israel in response to its intensified genocide of Palestinians. The pilot agreement that this county signed with Elbit is exactly that sort of financial aid. We can't ignore this, pretend like our county is not subsidizing a genocide, when it is. We're just asking each member of the council to consider how they would react if the Howard'sers being built out in Ladsen were coming to your neighborhoods to drop fire and concrete onto your families. I know what I would do. I would want the tax breaks canceled, and I would want to join with the community members who are asking this war profiteer to leave our community. Thank you.
Sir, we normally don't comment afterwards, but certainly I did not receive your personal invitation to meet. Please extend that to the clerk, and she will get you on my calendar.
We will do.
Thank you.
Gillian Bergeron, followed by Tracy Waddell.
Hi, Gillian Bergeron. I live at 1133 Arthur Drive. My husband and I are both from South Carolina. We have a child in the Charleston County School District. I'm a small business owner, homeowner, taxpayer, and a voter, regular voter. I'm here to voice my extreme dissatisfaction with the choice of this council, to not only allow a company like Elbit Systems to operate in our community, but to incentivize it with dollars that absolutely should be going into better public schools, transportation, affordable housing, and a litany of other things that anyone in this room can probably name that are more deserving than a company whose business model is genocide. Communities, governments, companies, and organizations all over the world are cutting ties with Elbit Systems, because they do not want to be complicit in this. This company is directly contributing to violations of international laws against humanity, and by welcoming them here with open arms, we are enabling them. This is not complicated. Elbit makes weapons down the road from here. They ship these weapons to Israel, where they are used to murder and maim tens of thousands of innocent Palestinian people, by conservative estimates. They turn schools, hospitals, and places of worship that are literally thousands of years old to rubble, and they wipe out entire neighborhoods, and with that, entire families, generations, from great-great-grandfathers, toddlers, and babies still in the womb. Charleston County is enabling Elbit, as Elbit enables this genocide. Whatever your faith or standards for morality, the facts are undeniable. This is a bad company, and we do not want them here. What I understand, the Elbit Out of South Carolina Coalition was told last council meeting to send an email to council members, and they would get a response, and this has not happened yet. As you all know, as public officials, you are accountable to us. I hope the chair will resolve this issue appropriately, and all of you will choose to stand with your community on the right side of history. We do not want this blood on our hands. Thank you for the time.
Tracy Waddell, followed by Colleen Farah.
My name is Tracy Waddell, 509 Rainsong Drive, District 9. I'm wondering where Jenny is. 10 years ago, I stood before a city council, or actually, 20 years ago, I stood before a city council in Atlanta to open up two charter schools. It was then that I was disappointed to learn that often, decisions at this level are made based on profit over people. It was very discouraging for me to see how the children and the teachers were never considered in any step of opening that charter school. I decided, my husband and I decided to uproot our family and move to what we thought was a more charming, small-town community of Charleston, and we came here in 2011. I was very discouraged, disappointed, and disgusted to learn that this council approved the incoming of a business such as Elbit. I thought I was moving my family to a safer place. The, this is not what, how you want Charleston to be characterized, with businesses such as this. And I just really hope that you all start to consider what the people in your community are asking you for, which is to just, just do it, do what's right. Thank you.
Farah, followed by Miko Malah.
Evening, council members. I'm Colleen Farah with the Kiowa Conservancy. Each of you should have received a copy of the letter that we sent earlier this week. you should have received a copy of the letter that we sent earlier this week, but just in case you didn't get it, just wanted to read it to you. So, "Dear Council Chair Middleton, thank you for the opportunity to address the concerns raised during the January 14th, 2025 County Council meeting regarding the Kiowa Conservancy's preservation efforts involving the property known as 4346 Betsy Karason Parkway and its proximity to the Greater St. John's AME Church. First and foremost, the Kiowa Conservancy values its longstanding and positive relationship with the Greater St. John's AME Church, which began well before the Conservancy acquired the property. Throughout this time, the church has been informed of and supportive of our preservation vision for this parcel of land. We wish to unequivocally clarify the following points. 4346 Betsy Karason Parkway does not encroach upon the Greater St. John's AME Church graveyard. To the best of both the Conservancy's and the church's knowledge, no graves belonging to the Greater St. John's AME Church are located on the property at 4346 Betsy Karason Parkway. Reverend Gordon, pastor of the Greater St. John's AME Church, has never indicated that preservation of 4346 impacts the church's property or cemetery. Instead, Reverend Gordon has shared that the church is facing space limitations in its current cemetery and exploring other options elsewhere on John's Island. The Conservancy has recently become aware of a small, private graveyard that's unaffiliated with the Greater St. John's AME Church that may encroach upon our property. Any burial sites located on Conservancy properties are protected in perpetuity. No actions will be taken to disturb or negatively impact them. In line with our dedication to preservation, the Conservancy will undertake a comprehensive study of the property to identify and protect any additional burial sites that may exist. Please rest assured that the Conservancy is committed to respecting and protecting cultural and historical sites, including burial grounds, as part of our mission. Desecrating, desecrating, desecrating is not and will never be permitted under our stewardship. Thank you."
Followed by Matt Mossberg.
Dr. Malah is on his way. Is it okay if he comes at the end of the public comment?
No, ma'am. Our public comments are first come, first served, and you're supposed to be here to sign in. Matt Mossberg, followed by Brandon Fish.
Matt Mossberg, 58 America Street, Charleston. You know, we're all here, we've actually, a lot of us have been working for a long time to get some sort of recognition for the issue of just the fact that this is ongoing genocide and apartheid, but the fact that we actually have an institution here in Charleston County that is providing direct material aid to a government that has been declared to be committing acts of genocide, war crimes. It's not just international law, it's actually within, you know, American law, that we're not allowed to provide any sort of financial support to people, to states that restrict aid from being humanitarian aid being delivered to civilians. You know, the facility here specifically focuses on building a howitzer, a tank-mounted howitzer system. Previous meetings, it was addressed that those are used to launch white phosphorus, which in and of itself is a war crime. One of the other things that Elbit Systems specializes in is spike bombs, which are ordinances that are loaded with tungsten cubes that are designed to shred flesh. And this is coming from a government, from a military, and from a company that declares itself to be focused on precision and to be focused on surgical strikes, but we're talking about explosive devices that are being launched into civilian populations, into hospitals, into homes, into institutions of education, of worship. And if it's not an ethical thing, if it's not a legal thing, I don't know what will make this county act in the appropriate manner, but it's certainly outside of the realm of good conscience to continue to allow this company to function off our tax dollars in our community. And I suppose that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Brandon Fish, followed by Satana Siddiqui.
Good evening, council members, and Chairman Middleton, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brandon Fish. I'm honored to serve as the Director of Community Relations for the Charleston Jewish Federation. Two quick observations to make based on some of the comments I've just heard. I'm not gonna get into international geopolitics, but, you know, in terms of aerospace and defense manufacturing, that's one of the cornerstone businesses, industries of Charleston County. Boeing is another aerospace defense manufacturer that operates here in Charleston County that y'all, I'm sure, have heard of. They employ seventy-eight hundred South Carolinians, and they provide arms to the US and Israeli militaries, just like Elbit provides arms to the US military and the Israeli militaries. Just like Elbit got a filet agreement, so has Boeing and a number of other defense manufacturers. And it's not diverting, as you know, tax dollars away from people who are paying taxes. It is relieving a tax burden that, as an incentive, to make the $30 million investment that Elbit has made here in Charleston County and hire three hundred Charlestonians to work here. Why am I here, though? We have Elbit members in our, people who work at Elbit that live in our Jewish community, that worship at our synagogues. They're great people, and frankly, I'm embarrassed that, that they have to go to work and be picketed in a place that prides itself as being hospitable. You know, they, they've made a huge investment in our county, and I'm mostly concerned that this kind of behavior is going to escalate, just as the pickets escalated into canvassing neighborhoods, just as showing up at city council meetings escalated into being thrown out for disruptive behavior, just as so-called Zionist businesses have been targeted across the country, and anti-Semitism has exploded. I would just encourage my friends to raise funds for those impacted, volunteer. There, there are a lot of ways that are productive. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I still haven't heard from any of the speakers, what the county, what they're asking the county to do, and whether it's within the power of the county. Anyways, have a good night.
Satana Siddiqui, followed by Taylor McElwain.
Dr. Satana Siddiqui, 103 Sotilly Street, 29403. Two days ago, two-year-old Leila Hatib was shot in the head by an Israeli sniper in her home. She was having dinner with her mom in Jenin in the West Bank, Palestine. I tell you this because some of you might not be informed to know that the supposed ceasefire in Gaza that took place just over a week ago does not mark the end to the over seventy-five-year-long Israeli violence on Palestinians. But you have been informed by your constituents here that Charleston County is complicit in the Israeli violence. We've told you at the last two meetings that Elbit Systems, the Israeli weapons manufacturer, which this council has signed a FLO agreement for a couple of years ago. Your constituents are here. If anyone else is, everyone here in support of the Elbit Out of SC campaign will please stand. We are requesting a meeting with you. We have sent an email to every single one of you and have not heard a response. We will be following up, but we want the council to stop this cycle of violence, which has felt reverberations across the globe. We urgently ask for your response. Thank you.
So again, we normally do not respond in these public comment periods. I did note to the gentleman who also requested a meeting. Please see the clerk, and I will gladly meet with any or all of you. Thank you so much.
Taylor McElwain, followed by John Grigsby.
Hello, council members. I'm here to speak out against the presence of Elbit Systems in South Carolina. As a longtime Charleston resident and as a College of Charleston graduate who spent my educational career focusing on issues of genocide, I cannot emphasize enough the harm that Elbit Systems causes. They've provided the weapons used in the genocide of the Rohingya people in Myanmar, as well as the weapons used to perpetrate the genocide in Gaza. These weapons are designed to inflict the maximum amount of suffering on innocent civilians, including children. The fact that Elbit receives public funding that was largely approved in secret is appalling. This is money we could be putting back into our community, using to care for those in our city who need help, and yet it's being used to fund weapons that will then be used to commit genocide. All of these factors clearly illustrate that Elbit Systems has no place in our county and no place receiving public funds. For the good of our community, as well as communities around the world that have been torn apart by Elbit's weapons, I ask that you reconsider the tax breaks and grants that Elbit receives, and consider our request for a meeting, which has been reached out multiple times. When you go home tonight and hug your loved ones, I ask that you think of those who were forced to bury their loved ones as a direct result of Elbit weapons. Please listen to your constituents when we tell you that this is unacceptable to us. Thank you.
John Grigsby, followed by Rose Hasuna.
Thanks, John Grigsby. Dear Charleston County Council members, thank you for your time. You chose in a time where everyday families are hurting to subsidize Elbit, a company very closely attied to the Israeli state. Its profit subsidizes the Israeli military budget. An increasing number of voters will be asking questions about this subsidy that you may find difficult to answer. One such question is why you chose to subsidize an apartheid state far, far worse than South Africa was. Another is why you chose to subsidize a nation that in one year alone dropped more tons of bombs on a tiny, lightly-defended enclave, Gaza, than were dropped on London, Dresden, Hiroshima, and Nagasaki. Another is why you subsidize a nation founded through terrorism, a nation that has nearly emptied Palestine of its Christian population, a nation that has blown up seven hundred churches and mosques in the last year alone. Another question that our veterans will have is why you subsidize a nation that attacked lightly armed, in a se-listening ship the USS Liberty. After blocking its unique frequencies, Israel, over the course of ninety minutes, bombed, torpedoed, napdomed, and machine-gunned our ship in its life wraps in order to send it and its crew to the bottom, to blame it on Egypt. It ordered Israeli pilots who complained when they saw the American flag to bay orders of attack or go to prison. Israel is one of the top five nations stealing our national secrets with impunity. Notorious traitor spy Jonathan Pollard was freed from our prisons, where he rightly belonged, by Israel's lobby, and he was given a hero's welcome in Israel, having been personally welcomed on the tarmac by Bibi Netanyahu. Pollard's Cold War crime was to pass top-secret data regarding US intelligence systems to Israel, which shopped it to our enemy, the Soviet Union. Israel knew full well of 9/11, didn't tell the US, and sent its agents to record the event on the date. Google dancing Israelis, if this is new to you. Subsidizing that nation via Elbit Systems makes you complicit in genocide. Thank you.
Rose Hasuna, followed by Matt Colburn.
I'm Rose Hasuna. I live in 99 West Edge Street, Charleston, 29403. I'm a Palestinian-American who was born and raised here in South Carolina, and I have no control over my tax dollars being used to send weapons to Israel to kill and destroy Palestinians and their land. My family members in Gaza were killed by Israel's indiscriminate attacks, using American tax dollars and weapons. Even after the recent ceasefire in Gaza, we saw how Israel turned around and started attacking Palestinians in the West Bank. The state has enabled Elbit to profit off of multiple war crimes committed against the Palestinians and allowing them tax cuts, as we know and recognize that our own communities need these funds and resources. The Elbit Out of SC Commission Coalition members have reached out to council members, and we continue to seek a dialogue on our demands to end Elbit selling weapons to Israel to kill and fund this genocide against Palestinians. We want our voices to be heard and our demands respected, so we can begin to take the steps needed to provide Palestinians the freedom and right to self-govern. Thank you.
And Matt Colburn is our last speaker.
How you doing? Matt Colburn, 3812 West Montague Avenue. I do want to say thank you, though, for responding with integrity. We know you just got here. I appreciate you that. We look forward to a conversation with you with good faith. As someone who doesn't have much faith in these institutions, it makes me feel better when I see somebody with integrity like yourself, so thank you for that. I am the other individual that was hit by a car. Talk of escalation, you know, we were assaulted. You know, we talk about people being afraid because they come and were picketing. We were assaulted, and my friend here was assaulted, and we watched the police officer say, "I'm not on duty. I'm not filing a report." You know, give all these excuses when he should have. He should have filed a report, right? I filed a report and heard nothing bad from anybody, right, of being unsafe. You know, people talk about they feel unsafe. How many of these people have been harassed by police officers, right? How many of these people have been threatened on live TV saying that they shouldn't have jobs because they don't have the right political opinion? People that don't like us picketing, don't like us canvassing, tough, tough rap. That's alright. That is alright to do so, and we do that even against our own country, right? So we're for sure not gonna let a foreign nation tell us we can't, we can't protest against their presence here, right? And we know there are members that sit on this council that thinks that people who have the wrong political opinion shouldn't have a job. We're talking about money for jobs and education. Shouldn't kill children. We see these Elbit workers laughing. I asked one, "We have a chance. How many kids have you killed today?" I see you wanna do this. That's your response when people are saying, "We want money for jobs and education"? That's your response? We're the violent ones? We're the extremist ones? Don't murder people, don't commit a genocide? You know what I mean? None of these people who talk about feeling unsafe have been profiled by police like me in another combat, our face of thirty days in jail because we didn't protest the right way, right? So again, this whole talk of picketing and people feeling unsafe, it's nonsense. It's nonsense, okay? We're the ones that been attacked. We, both me and my friend have been assaulted, and North Charleston Police Department has done nothing about it. So please, spare me the dramatics. It's nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We are now ready to begin our county council meeting. We are pleased to have with us Chaplain Roy Gilde of the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy that will lead us in prayer, and from our Emerging Leaders Program Class II, Finance Director Lori Hagberg.
Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give each council member wisdom and guidance at their delivery on the item before them. Make every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. The Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
From our January 14th meeting.
Move to approve.
Probably moved and seconded. That moved, and I presume that would be a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Again, commendations to the clerk and her staff.
Thank you.
Item three. Three A. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. A second reading.
I just need to read the ordinance. Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the St. Paul's Fire District, South Carolina, to issue not exceeding 4,400,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, providing for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization, and providing for other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance has passed second reading with nine ayes.
Move for committee recommendation four A and four B.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. The ordinance reading.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending Section 2-126 and repealing Section 2-127 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances to provide for continuity of operations and to conform with current administrative positions. And an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina Incorporated, on a portion of county property identified as Tax Map Parcel Number 412000012, located at Leeds Avenue and Brickyard Creek Road, North Charleston, South Carolina, 29405.
Item five, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Five.
A and B.
Thank you so much.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. Item six.
Move for committee recommendation six A. Did we have somebody voted against that? Yeah, six A only.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you so much. The ayes have it. Item six B.
Move for committee recommendation six B.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. Thank you so much. The ayes have it. At this time, we'll have council comments, beginning with Mr. Moody.
Chairman Middleton, Chairman Reverend. Trying to get it out. Just one thing tonight. Just wanted to thank Mr. Tooten, if you'll pass along to our Public Works folks their sincere thanks for their, their efforts. I know a lot of our workforce can work remotely, and that's certainly valuable, but those, those folks were in the, in the weeds, and in the roads, and in the ice, and I hope we can find some way to take care of them, whether it's, you know, PTO or whatever it is, that we can, you know, let them have a day or two that they've worked twelve to twenty-four hours, and let's, let's make sure we take care of those folks. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to recognize our Public Works Directorate, specific Mr. Bigpen. Mr. Thigpen and Mr. Adams and all the folks that work in that directorate. They truly went above and beyond the call of duty with the snowstorm or snow event that we had, and I'm, all the councils are aware of this, but DOT, their snow plows were not up to the task of dealing with the ice that we had on the roadways here. They were rubber tip blades, and then they would not push the ice away from the asphalt. They tasked or asked for our assistance, and Mr. Thigpen was able to mobilize our motor graders with steel blades to go out and clear our roadways, and that's exactly what they did from the top of the county to the bottom of it. And in the doing of that, the asphalt ate up our steel blades on those units, and he had to be very resourceful to find replacement blades. There were none available from our vendor, and he was able to accomplish all that. They had to take blowtorches and cut the bolts loose to change the blades. They managed to do all that and still get out there and clean roads from the top of the county to the bottom, which went a long way from making these roads safer for folks that had to use them. So I just want to give them, you know, an outstanding job for that. Thank you.
Well said. Councilman Darby?
Dito. Mr. Thigpen, the department, as always, I guess you were trained well by Mr. Tooten, sir.
Mr. Warman?
No, I would, I don't have anything to add, but, but I would love to add my name to, to the list of folks who are thankful that we were able to get through the storm and very grateful, certainly to everybody here and everybody working as part of this county, and certainly Mr. Thigpen especially, for all the work that I know they did, more than a, more than the double week's work, it seemed like, in, in a short period of time to keep everyone safe and to keep the county moving again. So thank you all very much.
Councilman Pryor?
Dito. Hold this and say it. Send the state a bill for those blades.
Councilman Sasse?
I'd like to follow up, Dito. Great job, Mr. Thigpen and your department and everybody else. Thank you all very much.
Councilwoman Honeycutt?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank Public Works, but also public safety. We had our operations center open. It was the first opportunity for our new emergency management director to take lead, and so appreciate all of those who had to stay and work the center while the rest of us were trying to stay warm at home, so thank you all. I do want to add, for the fourth meeting in a row, a discussion about the TST that will be in twenty-two months, if we decide to proceed with it. We had previously, I had circulated a proposed RFP to all members of council on January first. That was reviewed by legal, transportation, procurement, and I believe some other staff. They have redlined that document. I would ask the administrator to please finalize those redlines and circulate to council by Friday so that we can have this on the next agenda, and according to the rules of council, a member's request to add an item to the agenda is recognized. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Kabrowski?
First, I want to thank God, and I want to say a prayer for the return of the hostages from captivity. And remember October seventh, when Jewish babies were beheaded, women were raped for the crime of being Jewish, and our soldiers in Israel protected the land that the Jewish people there were murdering, and I heard nothing of that tonight. I heard about conspiracy theories about the Jews in nine eleven, and I just, this is also the eightieth anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, and I'm a proud American. I'm also a proud son of the Jewish people. In the time that Jews go to the slaughter like lambs is over, there's an army to protect us, and I hope and pray they will continue to protect the Jews of Israel, which was the dreams of generations for thousands of years. I also would like to direct the staff to, this is Ms. Honeycutt requested, to somehow make it on the agenda to give us updates on the weekly or pursuant to each county council meeting, an update on the status of the road projects from the two thousand and sixteen sales tax referendum. I'd like to get status of where the contracts are, what has to be done. I think as a matter of transparency, I'd like to just get whatever the status is, what do we have to do? What has been done from meeting to meeting, the status of those road projects? I think the public has a right to know, and also is possible for us to get updates every council meeting on the status of our negotiations with the State Department of Transportation, the CIB, for the aftermath of the sales tax referendum, to bring everything to a conclusion. We'd like to get, I'd like to have it for our county meetings that were updated every meeting on, on both of those events. And again, you know, we're not supposed to respond, but I'm very proud, again, to be an American, and no other place in the history of the world have we been as accepted as this, and I see what goes around the world, in England, in France, and I pray that that doesn't happen here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Kabrowski, and to all of my council colleagues, to Madam Attorney. Do you have any comments? Thank you so much. Mr. Administrator?
Very quickly, sir. Let's not give all the credit to Mr. Thigpen and his people. Walt's folks, facilities, we're in all the buildings with all the sidewalks. Max's folks, Sharon's folks, were making sure the bills got paid. Everybody did what they were supposed to do. Natalie May, I don't know what the lawyers did, but the EOC was open, Emergency Management Division, we, go ahead, Steve. Should we tell them how we had to bail out the city and the state? Still did our roads and bridges and helped municipalities and the state when their equipment went down, so most of the kudos go to Mr. Thigpen and Mr. Adams and their crew.
Thank you so much, Mr. Administrator, and thank you again for all that you did. Your keeping us informed during the snow and ice event. Our prayers are continuously extended to all of our frontline individuals who are out there, particularly at the landfill and other places amidst the snow and ice, individuals who may have gotten hurt in some way. We're, again, grateful for their service, their sacrifice, and for everything that they did, even for our public information officer, all of the blasts that came out, keeping us informed of cancellations, openings, all the things that happened, to include the library system and all of their transparent communication that came out, to every, every, every DCA and all the directorates, as already articulated. I have had a very direct conversation with Chairman Powell. He was very thankful and called your name, Mr. Thigpen and your, your crew by name, and was very thankful of your assistance in which you all did, and certainly I was going to extend that to you as well. Wanted to, again, you know, just thank all my council colleagues for their collaboration and for the collegial way in which we're working. Ms. Honeycutt, it's the fourth meeting in a row, but certainly at every request, I then came back to you with something else based on what we needed to do in order to get it to a place, and I think, again, based on that redline document being cleaned up and coming together this week, we're not negating that conversation because we do have lots of projects that were on that transportation sales tax, the twenty-two plus others that are being contemplated, that we're going to have a large conversation about in February anyway, met with the transport, with the secretary, also Mayor Cogswell and other mayors, as well as Ron Mitchum with the COGS, so there will be robust conversations, excuse me, coming up relative to transportation sales tax and projects around the entire county that need to be at least addressed, given air, so that we might be able to figure out across Charleston County how we can begin to relieve the traffic congestion for all of our citizens. And then lastly, I'm just thankful for our chaplain, Roy Gilde, who is here from our Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy. Give him a hand again tonight, who gave the prayer. Very, very timely prayer. I appreciate that. I've been flying all day, so I definitely needed that prayer, as well as our council colleagues and all of those who are present here tonight, and to our finance director, Lori Hagberg. There she is. Give her a hand again for leading us into the Pledge of Allegiance. All of our emerging leaders, certainly at some point, one of these seats up here could be yours, and so we just want to celebrate you and thank you for being here tonight. And so again, with that spirit, I would like to call this meeting to a close.